Scott. I couldn't make out what Rob was saying to us in case that becomes important during the meeting. So I couldn't, I couldn't make out what Rob was saying to us in case he says something more important later in the meeting.
He was just reminding people to speak into the.
So I don't need to catch that.
Just a reminder, if you could speak into microphones when you're, when you're speaking, that would help everybody follow what's going on. Good evening. Welcome to the Richmond Board of Education's October public meeting. This is also the final meeting of this current board. As a new board, it will be elected as part of the civic elections coming up this weekend. So welcome to all of you who are attending tonight. Before we begin our meeting, the Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of the Hunkamenum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. And we give thanks for the opportunity to be meeting on this territory tonight. We do not have any recognitions that we need to start off with, so I believe trustees have a couple of announcements. We'll begin with those. Trustee Larson.
Thank you. At the September 21st public meeting of the board, a motion was approved to issue a joint statement with district partner groups in support of SOJI, which is an acronym for Sexual Orientation Gender Identity, and the Joint SOJI Statement released by the Ministry of Education and Childcare and K-12 Education Partners. The statement has been signed off by all our partner groups and has been posted through our social media challenge channels, pardon me. The board and partner groups are proud to support SOJI and all forms of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Larson and trustee sergeant.
Yes, thank you very much. On November 5th, the Richmond School District recognizes the efforts and contributions made by its support staff throughout the year. More than 1,000 support staff roles operate within our district, and all of these individuals play a part in the success of our school system. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to express my gratitude to all of our support staff who helped to make the Richmond School District the best place to learn and lead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item two then, which is adoption of our agenda. Do I have a mover for the agenda? Trustee Lee, thank you. Second or trustee Goldstein, thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question then, those in favor of adopting our agenda tonight. Great, that's carried. Thank you very much. We do not have any presentations this evening nor special recognitions or briefs. So we are already at item 3D, which is first opportunity for questions from the public or from our attendees. I see possibly a question. Ms. Baverstock. Good evening and thank you, Liz Baverstock, Richmond Teachers Association President. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. And I do have some questions for in regards to the Fall 2022 Enrollment Update, which will be coming up later in the evening. It's always a, do you ask the questions before or do you ask the questions afterwards? But what I thought tonight is that I'd ask that as you listen to the report tonight, which is a good news story as enrollment in Richmond is increasing more than anticipated. And, and I know, we know that's a good news story. But I do want you to consider a few questions which really actually relate back to the RTA brief that I presented at the last meeting. And the questions I want you to be thinking about, and they're not necessarily that you'll have any answers. But what are, what are the teaching areas where we're seeing shortages? What's the average daily teacher teaching on call shortage? How is learning resource and ELL support for students impacted when schools are short teachers teaching on call? Are teachers losing preparation time or not having preparation time made up due to shortages? And I ask not because I don't think the district is, isn't doing their work on recruitment. They are. And, and I know all the strategies that are going on to try and recruit teachers. Rather, I, I ask these questions to highlight my concerns with teacher workload and wellness. Because shortages do mean daily conflict at the school level. And it does mean it's conflict for teachers, for administrators, for QP staff, but also between people as you're trying to reshuffle a school first thing in the morning. So with that, I ask again, what is being done to reduce teacher workload? What is being done to ensure that teachers can do their best every day for students? So I leave those thoughts with you because it's only October and we're seeing stress on the system really higher than ever this year. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Baverstock, and your, your questions will be received and reflected upon. And I imagine that we'll ensure that the new board, once it's selected, will, will have these questions and concerns to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just do want to thank you for the last board meeting and passing the motion in support and getting the joint statement of support for SOJI posted and on social media and on your website. Very much appreciated for all your work throughout your term. Thank you.
Well, thanks. Thank you to you and to your members and to your executive team for collaborating with the board on, on that. In fact, I, I think it was one of those, one of the things you were advocating for as well in terms of, you know, as a district making a joint, a joint statement. And I'm glad that we were able to work together with our other stakeholders as well to make a very clear statement of support. And perhaps since we have this opportunity, just to say thank you for, as well for the past four years of working together. We often say that collaboration is one and relationship are, are key values here in our district. And I think I would speak for all my colleagues by to say that we have certainly experienced that as a board, working with Richmond Teachers Association. We have any other questions? And I apologize because I did not give our secretary treasurer a chance to let folks know how they could ask questions if they're not here in person. So if you want it, just to remind folks while we're still in the question period.
Sure. Thank you, Chairperson. Yes, just a reminder for the public joining us this evening via Zoom. We will have two question periods at which time we'll be reading out questions we received in our board meeting email address. If for the public on Zoom, if you haven't submitted your questions, feel free to do so to boardmeetings@sd38.vc.ca. Thank you, Chairperson.
Great. Thank you very much. So I'm not seeing any other questions at this time or through email. Okay, thank you. There will be a second opportunity for questions on items related to the agenda coming up later in the meeting. We'll skip our communications break at the moment and we'll move to item four, our executive, report from our executive team, Superintendent Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. So it's my pleasure to present around the district for October. We are about five weeks into school and I'm always amazed at what are the amazing things that are already happening in our schools. So start with World Teachers Day on October 5th. Our school district acknowledged the numerous contributions that our teachers make to public education. So educators around the district and around the world indeed were recognized through their accomplishments and the contributions that they make. And across our district, students shared messages of appreciation with their amazing teachers, and you can see just a few examples of that there. Maple Lane Elementary recently worked with a professional artist to complete their new school mural. The mural celebrates themes of ecology, belonging, and community. And the school hosted in-person community engagement workshops with the artists and the students in order to inspire the design. Every student then contributed to the mural by adding a local animal or an animal that lived in this land in the past. I was fortunate enough to visit Maple Lane this week and I had the pleasure of meeting the student that you can see there. His name is Falcon. And he shared with me his section of the mural and he looked, if you look down to the bottom right there, there's a spider with many, many little spiders. And that was Falcon's piece of the mural. So it was really nice to sit and chat with him and, and he shared his experience and excitement about the mural. So kudos certainly to the staff and the principal of Maple Lane for arranging this beautiful project. Staff and students at Garden City Elementary were also excited about nearing the completion of their school's mural. The mural was designed and painted by Athiana Picha into an interdisciplinary Salish artist from the Quantlin First Nation. During the projects, students learned about co-Salish art and helped the artist determine the content of the mural. So through these mural projects, students were able to learn from and engage with artists of diverse backgrounds while adding a meaningful piece of art to their school space. And in both cases, it has just completely added to the way the school looks and feels. So congratulations to both those schools. Friendship interviews at Curry Elementary. So what happens when learners from two classes connect? Students at Curry were engaged recently in an activity called Friendship Interviews. The Friendship Interview involves two classes, co-learning and platooning regularly throughout the week to share their gifts with each other and to build connections. Students gathered outside to practice initiating conversations, asking questions, listening, brainstorming, and taking turns. And finally, students reflected on what they had learned and did a wonderful job of showing that they cared for each other. And what you see there are the reflections. Gratitude Nature Walk. So recently, on a sunny fall day, students at Gilmore Elementary took a mindfulness nature walk. They began by reading stories from what's called the Grateful Book. You can see it there. And then talked about all the things that they were grateful for. During their walk, students searched for nature treasures and created some very special gratitude wands to reflect their experiences. I had the opportunity to visit Gilmore this week as well, and I have to say that I was so impressed by the positive tone when I walked into the school. You can feel it immediately. And so I congratulate the principal and the staff there as well. And the students who are working so hard to provide and create a warm, very welcoming environment. Nature Art Exhibit. So the Richmond Arts Coalition, in partnership with the school district, recently presented an exhibition at Brandscombe House on October 8th. The project featured collaborative work between a professional artist and students from Grauer and Homer Elementary. The exhibition helped develop arts literacy in school-aged children while amplifying and empowering the voices of young artists in our community. And I would be remiss if I did not congratulate and thank Ms. Jewel, who's in the audience here. Our fine arts district administrator, who has been very hard at work behind the scenes, creating these opportunities and working with local artists. So Ms. Jewel, thank you very much for your work on that. Recently, it was Meet the Teacher Night at Blair. So over 200 students and their families came to Blair's Meet the Teacher Night recently. The hallways and classrooms were filled with displays of students' work, classroom expectations, and learning intentions for the school year. Families had the opportunity to walk around the school visiting and speaking with the teachers. And they also got to enjoy visiting special places in the school such as the library. It was an exciting night, as many schools have not had an in-person Meet the Teacher event in over two years. Staff and families both commented on how wonderful it was to be together as a community inside the building. Every year, the McRoberts Library Learning Commons recruits students to volunteer in their library. Over 35 students have signed up to be pages this year. These volunteers oversee cleaning, tidying, and organizing the library at the end of the day. And they also help shell books, create displays, write reviews, and make book recommendations. This initiative ensures that student voice is included in all the decision-making happening in the library learning commons. The buzz and energy at Steveston, London was electric as students recently celebrated Clubs Day. The school currently has 26 clubs running, including the Indigenous Culture Club, the Art Club, the Engineering Club, the Literature Club, and many more. Students were keen to develop and explore their passions while connecting and collaborating with their peers to enjoy opportunities beyond the classroom. Recently, the McMass Senior Student Leadership Team took on the challenges of the UBC Pacific Adventures Learning Ropes Course to build their collaboration, cooperation, and communication skills. The day started on the ground with various challenge activities that were meant to build trust and cooperation. And students were also required to utilize problem-solving, teamwork, and communication skills. With support from each team member, all the students were able to complete the High Roads Challenge. You couldn't pay me enough. Through this experience, students also learned that inspiration, care, support, and communication are key components to being a leader. And finally, the Playground Communication Board. So this past spring, a community communication board was installed on the playground at Arrington Elementary to allow students with limited verbal skills to more easily communicate without the use of augmented of communication devices. Staff and students received training on how to model language and interact with students using the Communications Board. Each class participated in an interactive information session and was guided to have a hands-on turn at the board. Students point to pictures on the board, which mimic the displays on personal augmented of communication tools to express their thoughts, their feelings, their needs, and their choices. By using this board, students have access to another means of communicating and interacting for social purposes. The board was designed to encourage a sense of community as well as an inclusive and more equitable playing environment. As you can see in the images, the board has generated great interest and is being used regularly by students. Chairperson, that concludes this portion of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Lots and lots going on, always. It's delightful to see, see some of these. Especially things I hadn't heard of before, like friendship interviews. I really do want to know, know more about that. Trustee Larson? Oh, sorry. You're agreeing with me? Yes.
Thank you for the part. It's interesting what's going on in the schools. I was just wondering, in terms of the communication, has to been any work or activity in terms of sign language, people can communicate that way? Do anybody know?
Assistant Superintendent McMillan, I'm not sure if you have a response to that?
Certainly. Now I'm just figuring out, do I turn on my camera but leave the microphone off, I think, and speak into this? Depending on the, the need of the student and their best mode of communication. For some students, certainly those with hearing loss, that may be a mode of communication. For some students, it is a, some basic sign is part of their communication process. And then as they move forward and we look at their strengths and what's the best avenue, it may be through augmented of communication, like, like an iPad that has very similar symbols to what you see there or sign language. It really depends on, on the child and their unique needs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Larson.
Thank you for this. I, I just love it. The, the art and, and just everything that, that you presented us with, that it being in the forest, whatever. And the, but particularly with the art and the drawings, I, I think of this, it's an opportunity for the students of all abilities to share their learning and their feelings. Because even though you might be able to write and speak very well, depending on what's going on inside, it might be difficult to get those words or the writing down, but to be able to show it in art. And I have, I love the communication board because I worked with a little boy who had a shower ring with pick symbols, just like that, on this ring. And kids would come up and talk to him and he would flip through that thing like you wouldn't believe and be able to communicate back with him. It was fantastic. So to see that now outside where, you know, you can point and do, it's remarkable. Thank you. I hadn't seen that.
Be interesting to know if, if, like, all of the students value having that, that opportunity to just communicate visually, you know, with that kind of a board. Well, thank you. And I, I think we can just see the, the joy and I, I think the faces as we see these stories, you know, even the last two months, just in terms of, of feeling like a more, a more normal fall, as you said, interview, you know, parent, teacher interview, things happening in person that just haven't been able to happen in person. So also grateful that we were able to do that this year. Great. Thank you very much. So that is, that is the end of the executive report, I understand. So we are going to move to item five, approval of minutes. There, in your agenda package, you have minutes from a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, September 21st for approval. Hoover, trustee Goldstein and seconded by trustee Tblotny, any discussion on the minutes? No. Okay. All in favor of adoption of those? Thank you. That's carried unanimously. And there's also a record of an in-camera meeting of the board also held Wednesday, September 21st in the agenda package. We'll move then to business arising. And our first item is an enrollment report. And that can be found for trustees' information and public's information on page 20 of your agenda package, page 20. And we have a report from our deputy superintendent, Mr. Ryan. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Nixon. So the purpose of the report that I'm sharing this evening is to provide an update regarding K-12 school age full-time equivalent FTE totals and corresponding funding implications when compared to actuals against the projections for the budget for September 2022. And so I won't take you through the entire report, which has been identified in your package, but I will make some comments about that. So all the figures in the charts in, all, all of the figures in the charts represent FTE and not student head count figures. And the district hasn't experienced a net increase of enrollment FTE in most areas that are identified in the chart. So actual September 29, 1701, final enrollment FTE will be reflected in the Ministry of Education and Childcare Operating Grant Recalibration, which is expected to be announced sometime in December. And assuming no funding formula changes by the ministry, the additional operational funding revenue is estimated to be $8 million as a result of enrollment growth. The anticipated operational funding will be used for additional teaching positions to support enrollment growth, consistent with the collective agreement, and additional support staff positions to maintain service levels in classrooms. The anticipated funding increases will also help cover unfunded statutory and contractual staffing costs as well as unfunded cost pressures due to inflation. The final changes to revenues and expenses will be reflected in the 2022, 2023 amended annual budget. So with that, good, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report, Mr. Ryan. Any questions or comments from trustees and trustee sergeant?
Well, thank you very much for the report, and it's obviously a good news story. But as has been highlighted by the Teachers Association, we want to really keep an eye on staffing and staffing needs. And also keeping an eye on the recalc and making sure that we receive the funding that we get for the actual people we have here, students we have here. So I think normally our projection is quite close. And so my thinking is, maybe I'll ask you, there is quite a large number. And what would be the reasoning for that generally? Thank you.
So thank you very much for the question. And maybe I will turn it over to Secretary Treasurer, why, to respond to that question. Thank you.
Sure. Through the chair. Thank you, Rick, through the chair. And thank you, trustee. Sergeant, for your question. That's a really good question. And so what we have seen in the metro area, school district is this year, many school districts have experienced a similar student growth. Whether it's being in Burnaby, New Westminster, Vancouver, Surrey, even Coquillum. So the whole metro area has experienced a similar enrollment growth. What it looks like, if you remember, trustees, if you remember in our budget brief, we talked about the enrollment projection being 1% for this year, 22, 23, 2% for next year, and another 1.2, 1.5% for the following year. So it looks like the three years' projection has arrived here earlier in this year altogether. So like I said, this has been experienced across the metro school districts. So there are two sorts of new students. One is about 50% of the enrollment growth comes from international immigration. And another 50% comes from other provinces through inter-provincial migration and other areas of BC. So the reason for that is, number one, there's a lot of, there, there are some pent-up, pent-up demand, if you will. So there's a rebound effect from, you know, from people moving into BC. Because BC is the most desirable place to live in Canada. So there's a rebound effect from the suppression due to COVID-19 in the past three years. So we've seen a lot of immigration coming into BC this year. And the other reason is, in the past couple of years, some parents, especially in the lower grades, what we've seen this year is for grade 1 to 4, we are seeing higher growth in the lower grades compared to the, the, the high school grade levels. Because we have more students exiting our system in the higher, in, in the high school grades. But we are seeing more students coming in, in the lower grades. One reason, of course, immigration. Number two is, some parents, because of COVID-19, have kept their children, especially grade 1, 2, at school, at home for home learning. But this year, you know, students are coming back to the brick and mortar schools. So those are the multiple factors affecting the enrollment growth this year. So you're absolutely right. Typically, our projections are very close to the reality. But this year, we've seen this is happening across the metro area. And number two is, I just want to make a quick comment on the budget impact. Yes, our revenue is likely to go up depending on the ministry's funding announcement in December. So but at the same time, our expenses are also going up because the majority of our budget is in staffing. And if you remember, in our budget briefing, we talked about there were a lot of unfunded cost pressures because of inflation and because of the, if you remember, the ESA changes, right, that impose a lot of unfunded cost pressures in our system. So this is absolutely a good news. We are able to use some of the increased revenue to cover those unfunded cost pressures. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think just that as the board will really have to keep an eye and make sure, because if it's happening all over BC, that's a lot of cash that ministry will be, the government will have to be coming up with. And sometimes it always just doesn't come flowing. So I think it's important to watch that. Thank you.
Trustee Tblotny.
Yes, I was noticing our international education actually went down. I know we've been looking for it to recover from COVID. And so do we think it's gonna, still think it's gonna bounce back? I'm just wondering why it went down instead of up. I'm curious.
Through the chair. Thank you for the question. So typically, at this time, we have a comprehensive report that would come from the director of International, but he's traveling right now overseas, recruiting. And so I'm going to give you a very surface-level response. His would be very comprehensive. But nonetheless, what's happening here is that the projection of 720 FTE is for full year. So the data we're providing you right now is a snapshot in time. We absolutely expect that this will increase at the semester turnaround, continuous enrollment, short-term programs, et cetera, et cetera. So but this is, this is the actual, as we sit here right now. Okay.
And are, are students still, are they having any trouble obtaining visas and documents to get into the country? Because I, I know that was an issue for a bit. So I'm just wondering if that's still an ongoing problem.
So, so again, it depends on where they're coming from. There's certainly a lag. Our international department is working very, very closely with, with, with government and, but it's not, it's not perfect for sure. And but so back to your original question as well. So this, even this 703 is moving us in the right direction from where we were at the end of last year. So I just want to be clear about that, that we are continuing to see progress as we try to get back to where we were pre-pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I think I would just like to offer the comment as well that it is.
I think I would just like to offer the comment as well, that it is really encouraging to see. I don't know if this is, you know, a blip in terms of the, the amount that we've seen, like over-projection. And I know in the past few years, we have had modest increases, like that we had been turning around, where after years of decline. So it's a, it's a good news story. Hopefully, it'll continue. Definitely helps our bottom line. You know, and I think a couple of my colleagues have alluded to this, and again, referring back to some of what Ms. Baberstock was saying, just around the reality that the funding will be coming for, for those students. However, we still have the issue of actually being able to, to hire enough teachers and support staff to support those students. The funding is great. The shortages we're seeing in terms of EAs and, and teachers, recruitment and retention being major issues, just highlight again the advocacy role that, that boards are asked, are asked to do. And, and it's, it's not getting any better at this point in terms of, in terms of recruitment and retention. And I, I think it's something that boards are going to have to, are going to have to be pushing on even more in the future. And, and around support staff and especially EAs, we know, we know that's also causing, you know, huge amounts of stress when there are shortages in our schools. And, and again, part of it is, is, you know, work workload and, and pay. And these are things that are beyond just school districts' control, and we need to be advocating, so. But great trend for us in terms of enrollment in, increase. So thank you very much. Final call for questions, comments? Thank you for, for the substantive information. It's really helpful to see, see it all broken out. Thank you.
So our second piece of business arising is an early learning, a presentation on early learning. And I'm going to ask our assistant superintendent, Jane McMillan, to introduce this item.
Hi, everyone. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Catherine Jewell, who is our district administrator for early learning. Catherine took this position at the end of August, and I've never seen someone come up to speed on a more complex and robust portfolio so fast. This was, her position was developed as part of some targeted funding we received from the ministry specifically for this position. And I have to say, within Learning Services, we're very grateful that she has taken this on. And she's going to be leading us through sharing some of the early learning opportunities we have here in Richmond. Thank you, everybody. It's my absolute privilege this evening to be here to share our projects and initiatives in early learning in the Richmond School District, our landscape and our horizon. So let's start by having a common place where we all have an understanding of what is early learning. While back earlier in the year, the Ministry of Education, of course, changed its name, the Ministry of Education, to the Ministry of Education and Childcare, marking and showing a movement towards enveloping and embracing our learners right from the age of birth to the age of eight is for early learning. The early learning encapsulates early childhood educators in our system, our primary teachers and other service providers that all work together in support of families, children and the community to help our littlest learners meet their full potential. We have a beautiful document called the Early Learning Framework. And this framework is a ministry document that's written primarily for educators and others involved in supporting early learning in, with a focus on the children, as I had explained. This, this framework offers guidance to our educators around reflective practices and inquiry-based learning. Part of our goals moving forward on the horizon is to create more opportunities for our educators working in early learning programs and in primary classrooms, the teachers, to participate in professional learning opportunities to support the implementation of this early learning framework. And also to have opportunities for our families to engage with the framework. We have a guide for families that is created by the ministry, and we're looking at having possibilities of families coming together from our, some of our centers that are in existence to work through this guide so they can understand what is at the heart of the early learning framework. What does it look like in practice? Well, it looks like an alignment with the first people's principles of learning, an alignment with our good B.C. curriculum. And it also has wonderful living increase that the students and the teachers engage in. And these living increase are around wellness and belonging, engagement with others, whether it be with families, agencies, or educators in the system, and engagement with the materials. And you can see a beautiful picture here of children with highly meaningful curated materials that they engage with, and also living increase with the world. I was at one of our Strong Start Centers today, and they were out in the forest by McNeely School looking for beautiful items that they were on a scavenger hunt for. It also is living increase into how we communicate and how we have different literacies that support that. And of course, a living inquiry into that sense of belonging and being within our system and having those social connections to support that. Another program in place in our district, longstanding program that so many of you probably have actually been to these centers or have had family members, is our Strong Start Centers. Our Strong Start Programs provide school-based learning services for families and caregivers from birth to age five at no cost. We currently have locations at Curry, at Grauer, Lee, McNeely, Thompson, and Woodward School. We want to continue to grow these centers as spaces and shared spaces with community partners. We have Touchstone Cap Seat that comes to our Strong Start Centers to provide supports. Richmond Cares and Richmond Gives are frequent attendees to our Strong Start Programs. We have iPals, a program that is alongside the Strong Start in one of our centers. And then we also have UBC nursing students that attend and have, it's, it's kind of like a practicum, and they also give supports to the, the parents as well as they need. We also want to continue to grow our Strong Start Centers as shared spaces with new just before preschools locations as we move forward with different ministry funding. What does it look like in practice? Well, we have a facilitator, an early childhood educator, and it's just that, that this, this individual facilitates experiences for caregivers and their children. Whether it be circle times, stories, nutritious, beautiful snacks that are prepared together. And these, these experiences have materials that are engaging for the children and also activities that are engaging. It also is a wonderful place for our families, our parents, to connect and create connections with each other. A very important part of growing and becoming a family is to be connected in the community, and these centers are hubs for that. Okay, we also have in our school district, very proud to say, opening that opened this year, two locations just before preschool at Grauer and Lee. The, it's a little bit of a play on words, right? Just before school, and then just before, meaning it is for our little four-year-olds in our system. It's an early childhood education program that operates in conjunction with the Strong Start Centers. So the Strong Start is in the same location, and it's a shared space. So for example, at Grauer, they have the Strong Start offered to families and their children in the morning. And then in the afternoon, the children are dropped off for a preschool experience if they're age four. The, the program is designed to be before the child goes into kindergarten. And it is a licensed preschool under the Child Care Licensing Regulation. So some of our goals on the horizon are to meet all the aspects of the licensing requirements to support our families with the affordable childcare benefit for the 10-day payment and to continue to grow our enrollment. Currently, each location has two programs, one that occurs on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and one that occurs on the Tuesday, Thursday option for families. We have a capacity for 17 children at each of those programs. And below, you can see our current enrollment. So we're, we're continuing to advertise, continuing to promote. And that is one of our goals this year, is to fulfill those programs. What does it look like in practice? Well, it, it looks like opportunities for centers, times to explore and learn in a non-hurried environment. We have learning routines that are put into place so that children begin to have those expected opportunities in their day, which creates sense of safety and a sense of, of assuredness as they move throughout their experience. Might be circle time, and again, outdoor learning, and also exploring some of their own passions that the children explore in the space. It looks like, well, things like this, weaving, washing up, building imaginary castles. This little, this little kiddo, there was a giant box that was brought in from an appliance, and it ended up being turned into a, a place where they created, they painted, and it was a lovely little castle that the children explored. There's outside learning, gardening, there's playground time, and of course, art in and out, rain or shine. Okay, another program that we have in place and that has happened over many, many, many years is Ready, Set, Learn. Ready, Set, Learn is for families for, and their three-to-five-year-olds to help have experiences to get ready for those connections of moving into the school environment. And it also involves community agencies. Typically, we have had one-time events and explorations within schools for preschoolers and their families. And we continue to have those events planned, special performers, and opportunities for families to come to school sites. We also want to continue to support with our funding from the ministry, the district-level early learning coordinator that is funded by the Ready, Set, Learn budget. We also want to grow our presence in city center with the Curry Early Learning Center. It, it much looks like a Strong Start Center. However, it also has other programs as well in place, including the Richmond Cares, Richmond Gives that is there. And we also want to have activities that are also appropriate to influence school readiness. What does it look like in practice? Well, in the past, we've had performers and opportunities. We also learned, though, during transitional learning, that having multiple entry points for families was, was advantageous to them. And there was good attendance with webinars, good attendance with smaller opportunities such as a Ready, Set, Learn teddy bear picnic, which was smaller rather than the big events that not all people felt like that was maybe for them. So we'll explore having multiple entry points for families to get connected. Well, Welcome to Kindergarten is also on our early learning profile here. Welcome to Kindergarten is those warm, wonderful experiences for the child to enter their new school that they register in for kindergarten prior to their, their arrival in September. The schools get very excited. They create experiences where the staff come together to share possibilities, to share play-based experiences. The learning partnership has been a long-term partner in, in, it's a charitable organization that has, has sponsorships to create Welcome to Kindergarten programs. And this partnership is changing, and we see this as an opportunity. So we're going to be exploring, reimagining Welcome to Kindergarten this year, looking how we can align it with our, with the early learning framework, align it with the first people's principles of learning, have strong literacy and numeracy connections still, and social, emotional learning. And we, we're starting to look at what resources will experience and experiences will honor these practices and looking at what might go in our Welcome to Kindergarten bag as a Richmond addition. We're excited about it. More to come. What does it look like over the past few years? Well, the child arrives with their family, they get a Welcome to Kindergarten bag, and then they go through some stations that inside the bag, when they go home, they'll have had modeled experiences with teachers and staff at each of the locations. There's also tips for families on how to engage with their child once they get home in different ways. And those are, those are modeled by different staff members and community organizations at the Welcome to Kindergarten. And this will continue. Another pilot program that we'll be launching this year for our very first time is Strengthening Early Years to Kindergarten Transition. And so the way to say that in the short is Say 2K. So this, this is really unique. This is bringing two systems together, the childcare system sector and the education sector. And it's not one-time event, like maybe a Ready, Set, Learn. This is an ongoing experience over the course of a year that connects the childcare system and, and the education system to provide relationships and have, create continuity of learning for families and children. We were to find a geographical area to pilot it in, and so this year, we're going to be taking the McNeely community. The community partners will be community preschools, the Richmond Public Library, the Canby Branch. And then the school district partner will be the McNeely Strong Start educators and the kindergarten classrooms at McNeely School. We're going to explore partnership ongoing over time with ways for the children to enter these different spaces, whether it be going to the preschools or the preschools coming into the kindergarten rooms. We'll also have events for families, and we'll see and we'll explore and identify what worked and continue that next year in, perhaps in the same location, or perhaps explore other locations as well. We also will see this as an opportunity to identify and address how our systems have some barriers and how we might begin to smooth them to create better opportunities for our families and our children to be, to be more connected and have that transition into kindergarten. I don't have what it looks like yet slide, because we haven't done it. So next year. And then on the horizon, something called Seamless Day Kindergarten is in our field of vision. It's very much in the early stages, and we are beginning to explore the various facets of welcome seamless kindergarten to understand how this option is as a starting point. And what we know so far is that Seamless Day Kindergarten is intended to create before and after-school care spaces using existing school classrooms to support the children in a school. It's for the kindergarten students to start. An early childhood educator provides the before and after-school care within a kindergarten classroom. And then that support continues throughout the day alongside a classroom teacher. This enables early childhood educators to work collaboratively with classroom teachers to provide learning experiences throughout the day. The benefit to a family is they receive early learning and childcare in a single location for the full workday with the same caring adults in their local school. This care too will be licensed, we know, for school-age care on the school grounds. And as we seek to look to move that, to move this forward, we'll definitely be working with our stakeholder groups to ensure that there is good communication and comprehensive planning to build this model successfully as our, as our entry point. We don't have any concrete plans at this time, as it's very much in our field of vision, but we'll begin to explore as we, as we move forward this year. And finally, to end us, so did you know? Did you know that the Provincial Outreach Program for Early Years is housed in Richmond? And this is a, a group as outreach throughout the province, and we house them and we sponsor them here in the district. However, their work is not just for the Richmond School District, it's for our whole entire province. I thought that was interesting for you all to know. So as I come to a close, I wanted everyone to know that we do have an early learning blog. You can find the link in this QR code. You can find the link in this QR code and/or you can go to our school district website. And this is actually where I would encourage you to check out. On our website, we have an early years, early, early learning program page. You can find all the information for registering for pre, the Just Before Preschools. You can find the blog on the Strong Start Center pages and a little bit more about the Curry Early Learning Center. So definitely head there for more information. So that comes to the end of my share of early learning in our school district.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jules. There's a lot, a lot going on. I'm going to see if trustees have any questions. Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you very much for your presentation was fantastic and your passion is incredible. And uh, just thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Taking that posting. I guess everything you said makes a hundred percent sense. And how great is that, you know, that young people can start off so early? Being connected to caring, loving people. I guess with my governor hat on and being part of the provincial discussion around this whole, you know, childcare, you know, we're now responsible for this. We were really advocating that, you know, what does this mean for governors? And what does it mean for, as governors, how do we have to look after our staff? And that we have funding for staff, that we have supports for staff. So it all is fantastic. But I think as a governor, I would really be making sure that the board advocate or be at the discussions at the table saying, what does this mean for us? Funding has to come with this and it has to continue to come with this. And these are pilots, which is fine, but it also creates demand in the community. And so I'd be interested that, there were two things I learned about the Say Kit. And then um Seamless K, obviously, how is the ministry and the government a hundred percent behind this? And how are they putting the money where the mouth is? And it's not just the money, it's making sure that we don't set all this up. Um, and then there's no support and then we're having to make changes. So um, I guess it's more of a comment, but I think the board of the day will have to be really part of this discussion. Really appreciate you sharing this for our public. But as governors, I think we have to uh work with our provincial association uh to make sure we're supporting our staff um with what they need and not just putting it on their desks as an additional item, even though it is a motherhood wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Sergeant. Uh, before we go to the next question, um, our superintendent has a comment.
Well, yeah, I appreciate your comments, Trustee Sergeant. And that is precisely why we brought the report tonight, to be honest with you, is to make sure that the board is aware of everything that's happening at this stage, and that'll continue to happen as this uh continues to evolve. So that when there are points where uh the board feels that it is important to step in an advocacy role or any other governance role, frankly, you'll have the information in the background that you need. So we'll, we'll continue with that.
Excuse me, Trustee Larson.
Trustee Lee might have had his hand up.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll just go to the side and then.
Okay, thanks. Um, thank you very much. Uh, when, when you think about how much education has changed geez, over the, even the last five, ten years, thirty years, thank goodness. And to see this richness coming and bringing in these little people and making the schools familiar before they have to go to that Welcome to Kindergarten and they've never been in a huge school and, and all of that. I love it. And, and I like one of the richnesses, the richness that you've spoken about is the support for families. I witnessed that being someone who took grandchildren to Strong Start. And the family support was incredible. So not just the students, because the next circle of support is the family around those students. And sometimes if those families don't have the support, that means the kids don't have the support that they need um at the time. And, and it's rich and I, 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 as, as, as Trustee Sergeant said, we, that's, well, that's the role of the trustee to advocate and make sure the ministry is going to back this. And your role presenting us with this information and, and growing this beautiful system is amazing. So thank you very much for your teamwork and, and what you're putting together here. It's exciting. It can't not be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go this side, Trustee Lee, and then Trustee Goldstein.
Thank you. Uh, it was great that I heard your presentation. Uh, I have several questions, if I may. The, your report and the slides, is it possible for me to have a copy of it? Okay?
Absolutely.
And on Ready, Set, Go, the age, it said from birth to five. Now, I've been asked by parents, do they really mean from birth? Do I bring my baby there two months? We, we couldn't, we couldn't possibly mean that, do we?
Um, the Strong Start Centers are for birth through age five and they attend with a parent, with a caregiver. So in those experiences, the facilitators do provide, they actually have some dedicated time for babies and they show how to teach and learn with a baby.
So if a parent asks me, could I bring my five months old, I would say, yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay. My other question, you've answered it because of what's going on, do they really mean from uh birth to eight, uh, that kind of thing? Now, are they free?
Strong Start Centers are absolutely free, yes. And the experiences that we explored today, um, all those different initiatives are, are part of our system.
Now, you said Strong Start Center is free.
Yes.
Does Strong Start Center offer all of those different programs?
Very good question. The Strong Start Center is one program in our district. The other programs would happen at different sites and in different, different ways, depending on the program.
And then my question is for them to find further information, because I wasn't able to give these parents, because they were asking me questions like that when I told them about these programs, programs, programs. Can they come to the school district office here and find out the answers?
They can, or they could go to the website. I've also had many families emailing me lately to get more information and I've been responding very promptly as well to guide them in the right direction.
Just to share with you, the parents that were asking me, they don't have uh knowledge how to use a computer. So they would have to physically come, but they could physically come to the office here.
Will always help someone, yes.
Right, okay. And uh, you, I heard you said something about the ten payments. What ten payments are we talking about?
Just before preschools have a ten dollar a day payment for families. And so families can apply for the affordable um childcare program by the governments offers and they can get that reimbursed.
My last question, maybe uh you would rather that our superintendent try to answer this question. My question is uh, now that the Ministry of Education, it's Ministry of Education CC, childcare. Uh, so the staff that we hire for those programs that are three to five, uh, six months to whatever, are they our staff or are they staff that belongs to somebody else?
So my understanding is it depends on the program. It, uh, as Ms. Jule indicated, in some cases it will be our staff. Uh, in some cases it will be a combination of our staff and perhaps a partner agency that we're working with.
And if they are our staff, would they belong to QP?
Uh, in most cases, I would say they would likely be QP staff, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving to Trustee Hamaguchi.
Richard asked all my questions. I was curious about the, the staffing arrangement, like would you be an employee? But that's been answered. The Seamless Kindergarten or Seamless Daycare. I guess one of the things that sort of stick with me and it's because I have a lot of friends who are teachers and and so that kind of stuff is sort of the usage of the classroom before and after. Um, I mean, I know some teachers are in there beforehand prepping for the day or they're after school preparing for the next day. How does that work when um you have kids there in the morning and afternoon?
That's a great question. It's part of our exploration as we move forward. One thing we're grateful for is we're not the first district trying this. And so Catherine, Ms. Julie is, is part of a provincial network, having these discussions. And certainly that's one of our questions front of mind because we want this to be supportive and successful. Um, so we'll work with both the provincial network to get information from them on how it's rolled out in other districts. And then work with our internal stakeholders to, to build this successfully. And the last piece being that we're going to be starting in one space. Um, this isn't a district wide rollout in all elementary schools. So we are going to grow this slowly and we're really just at the very beginning of exploring that for next year.
Okay, I, I have had chats with childcare providers. And uh, one of the things, uh, one of the comments that come up is sort of the use of portables, which I know always been a bad word before, but uh, in this case, having uh, a separate area for for this kind of program, is that, is that something that's being talked about or?
One of the discussions that's come up around that is the intent is that it's part of the kindergarten classroom. However, um, we're also looking at whether you, it would be helpful and extremely beneficial to license a second space. It's a different license or in addition to the license for things as if we were, if we were offering something on a professional day or where the classroom might be in use, what other spaces could be utilized? So I think that's going to be part of our discussions moving forward to see as we begin to create a bit of a sharper boundary around how this is going to shape up.
Final comment, I think it's great that we offer such a wide variety of programs. There's such different varying needs out there and uh, the programs that the district has come up with, I think, address a lot of them. So, you know, wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Toblatney.
Yes, um, well, we had, I believe, a similar report at, at our education committee meeting. So, um, but I'm just amazed at the array of programs. And I sure wish that we'd had that array of programs when my kids were young. And um, and you know, I could have, I could have used that. I think the support for families is, is really important. But I was just wondering for uh new immigrants to Canada, say they come to Richmond, how do they find out about all these programs? Where are we putting out the information? I know it's on the website, but they may not need, may not know to go there. So just wondering how, how that's working.
Well, we have a partnership with, with our Swiss workers. In fact, um, two of our Swiss workers are working with us to help deliver some of the programming. And as well, each, we're, we're so fortunate that our school based administration also communicates to families in newsletters and on, in, in ways that make sense for their community. So we do have different ways that families find out. Um, we're also working to have some of our programming for our early learning centers translated currently. And that's up and running and we'll have that in place soon and that we can make sure that that is communicated as well.
So if a, but if a new immigrant, their child is not, they don't have any children like school age, how are they finding out about these programs?
Often what happens is that they're connecting with people in the neighborhood that are friends, so to word of mouth. But as well, Richmond Children First, an organization that, that is working with all the different stakeholders and community partners in early childhood education. They, they have our information. We also have the Childcare Resource Center. They have a, um, a spot for us and our programs on their site. And we're working to keep that current and they update us regularly with our days in session. And as families come for support there, they're, they're really, they're fantastic partners and they're sharing our work in the schools with the families as they arrive as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My, my comments were going to be along uh similar lines. So Trustee Toblatney is, you know, thinking back to trying to find daycare for kids twenty, twenty years ago. And yeah, it's difficult. And also that transition to school can be, can be difficult. And so, you know, having these options to connect in and be in and out of uh your local school in, in those early years, um, and just with what, whatever level of support and kind of support you need is, is really important. Um, the, the Childcare Resource Center, that is located at the caring place, right? There is it Richmond Cares, Richmond Gives that
Correct.
that, that does run that, because you were mentioning that that's one of the partners that we have for some of our programs. And I don't, I don't know how that came about, but I'm just really happy to see that. And we talked about it, Taking a Village, and I'm happy to see that we've got these partnerships in the community. And it is one place where often parents, you know, and newcomers get directed because they have so many programs. And then that's an easy way, if they're, they're telling their story, um, to get pointed in the right, in the right direction. So those nurturing those partnerships is really, uh, really valuable. The only question I had was around the, the new program, the Say, Say 2K. Is that, did you say, is that something that's been mandated by the ministry? Is that something that we've been, that districts have been asked to, to try implementing along?
For the strengthening early years to kindergarten transition? It is initiative that, that all school districts are piloting and trying, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Goldstein?
Thank you, ma'am. Well, that is, excuse me, that is really a bewildering amount of good stuff going on. I, I don't know how you keep track of it. My question, I have a couple of questions and they're related. First question is about waitlists. Are they hugely long, nonexistent? And then, and the other question is about those students who happen not to be in the, in any of these programs, but really should be. There are such students, you know, usually say they, they fall through the cracks or something. For example, do you communicate with classroom teachers about to find such students?
So I have two questions, one about waitlists. If you, are you referring to waitlist for preschool?
Well, for, you mentioned about thirty programs, the waitlist for those programs.
Yes, well, we have parent um appointment page where parents can go on. And the good news is, is with many different sites, there's lots to choose from. And we also ask parents to, to limit their visits to two times per week so that others have opportunities as well. And it's, it's the honor system and, and our families are very supportive of that because they know that we want to have as many people be connected as possible. In terms of waitlist for our preschool, we will, we don't have one yet, but we will maintain one. And it will be um much like a waitlist would be with the time and date and we'll process it each person as they go through in the future. Your second question is, um, could you remind me?
Sure, about the students who may be falling through the cracks, uh, maybe communicating with uh classroom teachers to identify such students or, for example.
Yeah, so we're looking at how we can support families that maybe aren't connected to our programs. Well, we're definitely, I think that our resources in the schools are very important partners because they know families, our, our teachers, our staff within schools. I think that's a very good, good advice. We are, we do want to think about how we can outreach into the community and that will be part of our work moving forward is, is as we become more, um, because remember this is fairly new, right? That we have this childcare piece as part of our work. Um, we will be thinking about how we can resource our families and help bring them in. And that might mean us leaving here and heading out into the community to support. So that's definitely on, on, on our thoughts.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that sparked a lot of conversation, questions. As I said, it's, it's a large portfolio. Thank you so much, both of you, for the work you're doing in this regard. And I know some of the funding that's, has come and is helping um support the coordination through, through funding position uh, district, at the district level. But, you know, I, I might hazard a guess that more support could be, uh, could be useful. It just seems like an awful lot for, you know, from one funded position. I'm not even sure it's a full time funded position. So again, um, there may be another advocacy piece along with ensuring that, you know, staff in our schools are, are supported, that the coordination needed. And to provide proper to support for the programs is, is being properly, properly funded. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, moving along in our agenda, we don't have any uh items of new business tonight. So we are at item eight, which is our second time of the evening for questions from the public or from our stakeholders. And I see Ms. Baberstock perhaps has another question.
Liz Baberstock, Richmond, President, uh, Richmond Teachers Association. And I have two questions that I just want to um leave you with. And it, it does relate to the early learning presentation. And it is really about stakeholder, how will stakeholders be involved um through this? And how will the board stay attuned to the increased demands on schools that do come with um early learning? that do come with um, early learning? I do see and recognize the opportunities, but there's a lot of challenges here. Um, and it's workload, additional workload on schools. And I've already um, talked about where I where I see and I'm concerned about the wellness and the stress levels and the conflict. And I do uh, look at what if there aren't enough um, resources or funding for like additional resources? Um, or staff? Um, and what about the sharing of spaces? Um, and the impact that that has on the planning and the preparation that a kindergarten teacher has to go through, getting their classroom ready each day for the learners. So that is why I come back to um, how will the stakeholders be involved? And how will the board stay attuned to these increasing demands on schools? Thanks.
Thank you. Just I checked to see if we had any questions come through on email. Okay. Then we'll move along uh, to our standing committee reports. Audit Committee, trustee Goldstein.
Yeah, the next meeting of the the next meeting of the audit committee is scheduled for Monday, January ninth uh, via Zoom.
Thank you. Education Committee, trustee Larson.
The next meeting will be held Wednesday, January the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. At six P M, sorry.
Thank you. Facilities and Building uh, Committee, trustee Hamaguchi.
Minutes of the meeting held on September seventh are attached for information. Meeting was held on October third, twenty twenty-two. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December seventh at four thirty P M.
Great, thank you. Finance and Legal Committee, trustee Sargent.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, December seventh at ten A M.
Great, thank you. Policy Committee, trustee
Yes, policy committee is putting forward one more piece of work. Uh, paid on page twenty-six of the package, uh, there is a recommendation regarding our phase two for uh, facilities. Specific board policies, uh, we've been working on on um, updating some very old policies, some of them thirty years old. And uh, so we're working on phase two, which focuses on a review of maintenance, operations, and transportation policies and regulations. Um, so it was received March seventh uh, of the public meeting of the policy committee with stakeholders and um, they've uh, um, agreed to, you know, provide some initial feedback. So at this point, uh, we feel that it's ready to go um, into stakeholder review. So uh, the recommendation is that the board, Richmond, that the Board of Education, Richmond approve that policy seven oh two, seven oh two point two, seven oh two point six, seven oh three, seven oh three point three, and seven oh three point four and regulation seven oh two R and seven oh two point two R and seven oh three point four R and new regulation seven oh three point three R and administrative guidelines, seven oh three point three G and retirement of policy seven oh two point nine, which is collectively the phase two section of uh, seven hundred policy review. Be circulated to our stakeholders for input and feedback with a timeline of two months.
Great, thank you. Are you moving that recommendation? Thank you. A second or uh, trustee Hamaguchi, thank you. Uh, any discussion by trustee Lars, uh, trustee Sargent?
Thank you very much. Um, I was gonna make a joke, but I just, I would, it it notes two months, but I think it's a pretty sensitive two months coming up between uh, you know, changes in the board, Christmas, all of that, and making sure there's enough time for stakeholders to have, you know, to give input and then also for the new board to consider. So it says two months, but I would just ask staff to be considerate of those time.
And I imagine that's probably why we don't have a definitive date on here. Sometimes we have a have a deadline and uh, we're, I think, wanting to give it some flexibility in this case. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question, those in favor of the recommendation. And that's carried, thank you. It's good to move that piece of policy work forward. Wonderful, thank you. And your next meeting?
Are, we did hold a meeting on, oh, sorry, um, wrong one.
Oh, we've got
Yes, sorry. Did hold the meeting on October third and our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December twelfth.
Hey, thank you. We don't have any correspondence in our agenda package this evening. Um, we also don't have uh, committee or representative reports. So we're moving to item twelve. And this item is entitled trustees reflections. As we're coming to the end of a four-year term, uh, we wanted to offer uh, trustees an opportunity to reflect on the last term. So I'll just open it up there for those who'd like to offer some words. Trustee Sergeant.
Uh, thank you. I I don't have anything written or anything like that. And I I want to use my time to say a massive thank you. Um, the last four years, when I think about us hiring a consultant to look at a strat plan, which is something I'm very passionate about and to move down that path. And with such vigor and collaboration with everybody that works in our system. And then I remember sitting here and we had a workshop and I think you got a call saying, we're gonna have to think about closing schools, there's a pandemic. And I remember thinking, what? You know, that had never happened ever and we were just sick to our stomach. And then, you know, phones are ringing everywhere. And and when I think about the the time from then to now, it it never been through anything like that. And I think about how this district has been known to be a collaborative district and the people that work here really honestly care about the students. And just to see the amount of work that happened from all of our staff um, on the ground in the district office, just everybody pulling together to say, what are we gonna do? I mean, this was, we're sitting here now, but we, I I try to remind myself of where we were, where, you know, kids are are having to go online. Like, it was absolutely an incredible time. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who works so hard um, to just keep it going for every little kid. And even down to feeding children and families, it's just like unbelievable. So I just want to say it was indicative to what our district stands for and how we all work. And I just want to say a massive thank you. The reports that have come to the board are so exciting. They've been written collaboratively and our work is a lot. And it's gonna be a great next four years. And thank you to our superintendent, really have made a huge difference. And um, thank you to all of our stakeholders, who I really mean this, work every day together. And a special thank you to my colleague trustee Goldstein. Thank you very much for your, you're always asking those questions that make us think. And um, a special thank you to trustee Nixon, who really um, your care and your solidness and your calmness and your care, I guess, really comes through in all the work that you do and making sure the board has what it needed and that we had our reports and that we could be good governors. Um, but it was always around care and uh, you were always prepared. And I just really want to thank you for your kindness and care. And um, thank you for your contribution to education. Thank you.
You have to call on someone else.
Yeah, well, I mean, I have to echo uh, trustee Sargent's comments. I guess was a time like no other. Covid, I mean, you know, we started, um, well, we ended the last term with the approval of the SOG policy, um, which, you know, was was daunting work, but we completed it. Then we came into this term uh, moving forward with the SOG Advisory Committee and moving that that work forward and looking forward to to um, seeing that come to fruition. So um, and this, this new board or soon to be the old board was um, has advanced the work even more with the diversity, equity, inclusion. And also, you know, I have to, I have to um, say that I am just amazed at the progress that we've made on our facilities. Because we were stuck for so long, this district did not get um, seismic upgrades and uh, repairs for the longest time. And in the last four years, we've moved ahead so far. And I have to thank our staff and Mr. Guyer and all of his staff for the work on that and and our staff for um, working so hard. Uh, the amount of work that we have done um, in the last four years, especially in a time of Covid, is just, it's mind-blowing. And last meeting when we had our reports come forward, it was just um, really heartwarming to see all of that. So I have to thank everybody for the work that they've done. And as trustee Sargent said, coming together in such a hard time. I do want to thank uh, trustee Goldstein. Um, I've served two terms with trustee Goldstein and it was, it was, it's always interesting the questions that he asks and his thoughtful reflections on on um, on everything. And um, you know, I really think he puts his heart and soul into the work. And uh, I thank him for that and he will be missed. And uh, trustee Nixon, your leadership has been phenomenal. And you have contributed a lot to the district and um, I I really, you know, wish you well. Um, I wish you get that, I'm hoping that you'll get some much-needed rest to reflect and uh, and reflect on your good work here. You've enriched our lives and this this uh, district. So thank you very much. And, you know, I just want to say that that this this board in the last four years has moved this district forward towards change in a lot of ways, and I'm thankful for that. And thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for those reflections. Uh, trustee Lee.
Thank you. Uh, my reflections. Over the last four years, I have learned so much about our K to twelve school system in Richmond. I've learned them from our superintendent and his administrators, our educators, our parents, and our students. And I also want to thank trustee Goldstein because as a trustee over the last four years, whenever I needed to dwell uh, and think a little more deeply about a topic that comes to our table as trustees, I always uh, either seek him out, ask him because he is a mentor to me in many ways uh, in that aspect. It was an honor and a privilege to have served as one trustee together with my fellow trustees doing our very best to focus on the well-being of our learners. And I'm grateful to our teachers, our Q P educate, education workers, our parents and our students, and to you, the people of Richmond, thank you very much.
You, trustee Lee? Other remarks? Trustee Larson?
I echo everybody's statement so far. Um, for someone who worked for the district for nineteen years and loved every job that I did as an E A, as a buyer, and as a home state coordinator, I I got to meet people in this building, I in in the maintenance building, in the schools, and sort of understand how everybody does work together. We don't just say it, we really do. And to see um, to have the then the opportunity to run as a trustee and be a part of this group and learn from everybody and now see the district as a whole. And again, working together and crying together and laughing together and being there for each other um, has been, has just been amazing for me. To be mentored by all of you as a first-term person, I was scared to death the first time I ever to sit in this boardroom and move the microphone in front of myself. I thought, oh, but you brought me along safely. And um, I appreciate all that I've learned from everyone, like just everybody. The families, the the students, the teachers, everyone, the senior staff, the just all of us, we we put our, we put ourselves forward to take care of each other. And um, like like trustee de Blotney said, we've, we've moved things along a lot, really important things. And um, I am, I'm not sad about trustee Goldstein and trustee Nixon moving on. I'll miss you. But I'm happy and excited for you because you're stepping into another part of your journey. And um, that's exciting. So I'll be thinking about that and um, hoping to hear about it too. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Trustee Hamaguchi.
Um, the last four years, I've really enjoyed. We got a lot of things done and and as you all know, I prefer less talk and more action. And I really believe that this board and the staff uh, and our stakeholders delivered on that because we've got, we did do a lot in the four years. And uh, and then, you know, that bodes well for the district and it bodes well for the kids. Um, I'm appreciative of being able to work with this group and including our stakeholders from the R D P A, the R T A, and the Rouse and Q P, um, especially our senior team, because we work so closely with them. And uh, our staff, the teaching and non-teaching staff and versus parents. And the people I learned the most from is the kids, uh, the students, uh, which really kind of amazed me when I first came in here, that holy smoke, the uh, the ideas that I had and some of the notions, I thought, they're wrong. And when I talk with the kids, I go, oh, that's what I should be doing or that's what I should be thinking. So I'm I'm very grateful to have all these people uh, that I've come in contact with. As for my colleagues, um, I've enjoyed immensely working with all you. And um, you know, we started off coming from different parties and groups and everything. But, you know, once we're elected, we're all, you know, we're the, we're in the same boat. And uh, uh, like I said, I, you know, you're my colleagues and you're my friends. Uh, Norm, you, the question, I think, gee, should you be asking that question? You ask them and I love that. And uh, and and they're good questions and it makes you think that are good questions. And so I I wish you well. Um, Sander, our careers have kind of parallel each other. We are both independents uh, with no budgets and got elected. Uh, we created a, our other part, little party and uh, along the way, you know, um, I think we worked really well and became very good friends. And uh, I wish you the best. And you know, I'm disappointed that you're not running again, but I get it and I I respect your decisions and everything, but I will miss you. Um, and uh, I think you've done a wonderful job being our chair, right? Uh, that's about it. I just, once again, like, thank you to everyone, like, you guys are all amazing. And uh, I mean, uh, and I also believe too, and I I always say this with in hockey and with the kids I work with, my children with autism, that as the people around them go, so do the kids. And if you're, if the kids are surrounded by good people, people who care, people know what they're doing, then the kids are gonna do well. And that's why I believe about our shoes, they do well because they're surrounded by good people. So, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, trustee Hamaguchi, and I'm going to turn to uh, trustee Goldstein.
Thank you, ma'am chair, and I want to thank my fellow trustees.
Thank you, ma'am chair. And I want to thank my fellow trustees for their warm wishes on our past work together. By far, the greatest impression left on me by my two terms of service on the Richmond Board of Education is the sense of responsibility and gratitude for being elected to this position of trust. I've decided my time here is done though, and I will turn my attention to other interests and projects. The past four years have been a privilege to serve with my fellow trustees and to have worked with staff for a dedicated, compassionate and skilled in educating our students and running our district. Seven people never see eye to eye. Like, how many of you have had disagreements with your partners? A diversity of opinion on the board is healthy. However, once a vote is taken, every trustee must commit to supporting the will of the board to maintain the forward progress of board plans and projects. And we've done that. We, we've stepped outside our personal things and come together for, to move together. I'm also proud to say in my two terms as trustee, I've not missed one board meeting. I'm happy that our district, like so many of our societies, so much of our society has turned attention to addressing inequities. For our district, this has been manifested in our sexual orientation and gender identity, our SOG policy, diversity, equity and inclusion, DEI initiative, and ongoing truth and reconciliation, the TNR process. Properly context the truth based on evidence and clarity of communication are essential to having robust and lasting results from all these projects. Correspondingly, our country has a history of liberal democracy, which has served us well, encouraging communication and decision making. In contrast, in the last several years, there has been a tendency in institutions, especially educational institutions, and I'm not referring to this one, to embrace the ideas and practices of the woke or critical social justice subculture. I strongly urge against this divisive approach to addressing societal issues. And my closing words will be a song by Leonard Cohen called The Story of Isaac.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
He's not got, got a cape on this up. This allergy gets on the, on the chords and you can't go down to lower registers.
Slowly. My father, he came in. I was nine years old. He stood so tall above me. The eyes, they were shining. His voice was very cold. Said I've had a vision, you know, and strong and holy must do as I've been told. So we started up the mountain. I was running, he was walking. And his axe was made of gold. The trees, they got much smaller. The lady's mirror. We stopped to drink some wine. Then he threw the bottle over. Broke a minute later, he put his hand on mine. Thought I saw an eagle, might have been a vulture. I never could decide. Then my father built an altar. He looked once behind his shoulder. He knew I would not hide. You who build the altars now to sacrifice these children, you must not do it anymore. For a scheme is not a vision. You never have been tempted by a deep demon or a god. You who stand above them know your hatchets blunt and bloody. You were not there before. When I lay upon a mountain, my father's hand was trembling with the beauty of the world. And if you call me brother now, forgive me if I am quiet. Just according to whose plan. When it all comes down to dust, I'll kill you. If I must, I'll help you if I can. When it all comes down to dust, I'll help you. If I must, I'll kill you if I can. And you're seeing our uniform, man of peace or man of war, the pika spreads his fan.
That's my reflections manager.
Thank you. That was a lovely interlude as well. Or that trustee Goldstein. Thank you for your remarks. Well, I guess that leaves me. I'm going to try to get through this. I first just want to thank my colleagues for their kind comments. It, I was realizing that I've served with, with a number of, as vice chair for, with a number of chairs and also had the privilege of, of coming in and watching trustee sergeant as she was chairing when I first became a trustee. And so I've had a lot of really good mentors for the role of being chair. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve as your chair for the last two years. I do have some written remarks. And so I'll just, I'm just going to read those. Most of you attending or watching the meeting this evening will know that this past summer, I made the decision not to seek reelection for the upcoming term. It was a difficult decision as I have blaming the pandemic for this. I've truly enjoyed the work of being a trustee. When I first ran in two thousand and fourteen, it was, as a parent, I wasn't that involved in in, in the district, was parenting two children and working full time, but I started to see gaps in supports for vulnerable students and directly experienced that as a family. I also saw that LGBTQ plus students, staff and families did not feel as safe, included and represented as they deserve to be. As well, a labor dispute which had suspended classes for my kids and process of family had made me more aware of some of the issues caused by the chronic underfunding of public education here in B C. So I am so grateful to have had the opportunity over these past two terms, these eight years to work both at the district level and in advocating to government on these and other issues, issues like school seismic upgrades, especially here in Richmond, a huge issue, operational and capital funding that are supports for teachers and support staff, climate sustainability, doing our part as a district to address the climate emergency. And most recently, advocating for pandemic and post pandemic supports. The first board that I was a part of was able in partnership with its stakeholders, with our stakeholders, to develop new mission, vision and value statements, a long range facilities plan and a robust SOG policy. We were able also to work with government to establish project team as my colleagues have mentioned, which helped to fast track our school seismic upgrades. And we're happy to say that that's still continuing. Over the past two and a half years, this current board has had to deal with something no previous school board ever has. The COVID nineteen pandemic hit just a year and a half into this board's term. And the work which became paramount was supporting everyone in our school community, their health and their well being and their safety. And supporting our staff in adapting and redesigning programs and protocols over and over as the situation and requirements changed. And supporting our students and families as we all did our best to navigate the changes. And as my colleagues have said, everyone in the district pulled together. And that'll be a memory that I, that I take with me. Yet still in collaboration and in relationship with our education partners, we managed to move some non pandemic related and important work forward. Again, as others have mentioned, work which I believe has set the stage for the long term health of the district and the success of all our students. This work has included developing with our partners, our first five year strategic plan, approving a long term sustainability and climate action plan, a bold one, and undertaking the diversity and anti racism consultation, as well as living into the implementation of our SOG policy. Trustees are charged with representing their community in providing oversight to what is happening in their school district. We hold and attend to the big picture. Things like long range planning, setting budget priorities that support those plans. And something I'm personally passionate about, and I know not everybody can relate to this, setting policy which reflects the values of the district and helps nurture the culture we want in the district and in our schools. I'm humbled to have had the opportunity to contribute to this work. I'm grateful for every conversation, committee meeting, project, consultation, school assembly and celebration I've been a part of with students, parents, staff in all areas and at all levels, and my fellow trustees. I'm just going to say it, no one is involved in public education for the money or for the perks, benefits. It's because we know that what we do makes a difference in the lives of our children and youth. I want to thank especially our district's senior leadership team. Most of them are with us here tonight. These are the people with whom the board works most closely and who are tasked with holding the vision and moving it forward in concrete ways through supporting their staff teams and all of our schools' programs. And we have an exceptional leadership team here in Richmond. Thank you. In particular, though, I want to thank the Board of Education's one employee sitting to my right, and that is our superintendent of schools. It is a unique, a unique relationship that a board has with its superintendent. And Superintendent Robinson, I speak for all my colleagues. I know when I offer a heartfelt thank you for your unwavering support for the board and our work, this board over the past four years. And I know our district continues to benefit greatly from your skilled and compassionate leadership. There are times in one's life when you realize you need to step back, create space for considering personal and professional priorities and goals. And this is one of those times for me. And so once again, just thank you all for the opportunity to serve my community as a trustee. I hope to show up elsewhere in our community and, and find some new ways to to contribute. Once I, once I take that time to consider where life wants to take me. And thank you to those of you who will be carrying the work forward, I know in a good way. Again. Not quite finished our agenda. Somehow, staff managed to get an item onto the agenda. Right at the end here, call staff presentation. So I will turn that over to whoever is in the staff presentation.
That would be me. And thank you for indulging us. So four, four years ago, a number of us began a journey together that I likened to being in a canoe on a river. At that time, we joined the current of a river that has already been flowing for many years. Some of us had already been in the canoe when this board came together in two thousand and eighteen. And some folks have joined us on the journey at different points along the way since then. Different people have steered the canoe at different times, in different ways and from different perspectives within the canoe. And along each leg of the journey, the canoe has not wavered, but been further steadied as you. The seven trustees of the Richmond School District have kept your eyes on the journey ahead and paddled in unison as one. The past four years have been eventful. I don't think any of us could have anticipated some of the challenging waters that we would encounter along the way. The ride's been turbulent at times with the COVID nineteen pandemic, budget constraints and other challenges making for a very bumpy ride at times. But despite all this, we all, trustees, staff, parents, have managed to paddle in the same direction, the great majority of the time, keeping the canoe afloat and moving ahead on our journey. Despite the rough waters that we've encountered along the way, I believe firmly that this board has achieved great things. Board's journey has been a fruitful one. And as we look back over our shoulder to the past four years, there is much for the seven trustees sitting alongside me tonight to be proud of. Through your strategic plan, you've created a comprehensive, comprehensive vision and a course for the future. Created based on input from students, staff, parents and your community, already huge steps have been taken to achieve what your community told you they valued and wanted to see happen in the school district. And the next board is well positioned to continue the journey. You've listened to members of our community who have not felt listened to in the past. And you've committed to continuing to take steps to bring their voices forward, not only to be heard, but to guide us as an organization. There's still much work to be done, but this board has set a solid foundation in place to ensure that truth and reconciliation, anti racism, SOG education, and the voices of students will remain areas of strong focus for future boards. This board has worked hard to ensure that facilities that better serve students and staff have remained of strong priority. During your term, several seismic projects have been approved and completed. Schools have received additions and upgrades and ventilation has been prioritized. And none of this work would have happened without the advocacy of the board and the willingness of these trustees to dedicate financial resources to ensuring that our facilities are serving our community well. I could go on. But in short, this board has much to be proud of. So as we approach the end of the board's term, our journey as a district is not over. But as we temporarily, temporarily come ashore, we must celebrate the journey and particularly the work of the board itself. Enough trustees Nixon, Larson, Goldstein, Hamaguchi, Lee, Sergeant and Tablotney. We've all benefited from your dedication to keeping students at the center of every decision you have made. We've benefited from your insistence on respect and civil discourse, even when differences of opinion have been present. And we have benefited from the commitment each of you made four years ago to serve the students and families of the Richmond School District in the best way possible. On behalf of the district, senior staff would now like to make a short presentation to each trustee as a small token of our appreciation. And I'd like to call on Assistant Superintendent McMillan to begin our presentations.
Thank you. This presentation is for trustee Larson. And as you reflect on Superintendent Robinson's words, when you open this, there will be a, a strong connection, I think, to the metaphor that he's been using in indigenous culture and the carving that is, is a bit of a spoiler inside of this package. This one is reflective of the killer whale. And the killer whale reflects kindness, intelligence and compassion. And those of you who know trustee Larson or even who heard her speak tonight would absolutely agree that she embodies all of those things all of the time. And we want to present this on behalf of the district. Thank you. and we want to present this on behalf of the district. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to honor and recognize trustee Sergeant for your unwavering support, governance, commitment, and advocacy for the Richmond School District. I'll give more away, but this cedar paddle carving represents the heron. The heron is considered a guardian, who is a symbol of grace, patience, wisdom, and knowledge. Grace, patience, wisdom, and knowledge, all words that truly embody who you are. For over two decades, you have exemplified these values in your service and dedication to the Richmond School District, and for this, we are sincerely grateful. Thank you.
Trustee Goldstein, with honor, I'm presenting a cedar paddle of salmon to you. This is a symbol of perseverance and renewal. On behalf of the school district, I want to thank you for your contribution to Richmond's education system. You have performed your trustee role with dedication and tenacity. We appreciate your questions because we understand only through solving those questions and solving problems, we can grow as an organization. On both a professional and personal level, I'm grateful for the time we spent with you. Thank you.
Trustee Hamaguchi. And so I could have given a long speech, but I figured, you said less talk, more action, so that's what this is about. So Ken, you did a great job leading the board for the first two years of its mandate, and then it's been a real pleasure working with you as the chair of the Facilities and Building Committee the past few years. So I'm not going to give this away, but I will say that the wolf is considered a symbol of leadership, intelligence, education, and understanding, which I believe perfectly exemplifies you and describes you, and I am more than honored to present this token of our appreciation to you tonight.
Rusty Lee, I'm honored to be able to present you. This is a paddle, a carving. And I'm going to make a few words. You're welcome. Again, Frank just mentioned the wolf, and so this carving on the paddle exemplifies understanding, leadership, intelligence, and education. And these words certainly align with some of the many qualities that you have reflected in your term here as trustee. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to say thank you for your service to our school district. Thank you.
Trustee Tobotny. In here is a carving of a bear. And the bear in indigenous Northwest culture is a symbol of courage, strength, and family. And I just want to say how much of an honor it was to work with you on the Diversity and Anti-Racism Working Group with your kindness and your compassion and your wisdom as a governor and trustee in the school district. Thank you for leading with courage and strength and always putting our learners first.
Trustee Nixon, you're going to make me cry. So our gift for you represents the heron, which in Coast Salish culture is considered a guardian. As trustee and as chairperson of the board, you have been a guardian for every student in the Richmond School District. You have ensured from the onset that every decision made was intended to serve the best interest of our students and their families. In your role as board chair and guardian, you have also ensured that respect and civility have guided the work of the board of the school district. As was already mentioned, the heron is also a symbol of grace, patience, and wisdom, all of which you have demonstrated and indeed personified throughout your eight years as a trustee in our district. On behalf of the Richmond School District, thank you for your leadership, your kindness, and for your service to our community. I will say this to you for the last time. Chairperson, this concludes my presentation. Please feel free to open the gifts that you're wondering about what they are.
I don't know if those of you Superintendent Robinson and I were at the Orange Shirt Day Assembly at Bundell, thank you, Bundell Elementary last week, and the Coastal Wolf Cock was there. And they came in singing a song about all paddling together. The dancers had paddles that they came in and
So within each of your cards, there is actually a personalized statement that talks about the artist and the particular paddle that you've been given, the symbolism behind that. All right, trustees, no, you're most welcome. If trustees would be comfortable, we'd like to get a photo of you together one last time before the end of your term.
So beautiful.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Never, it's very dear to my heart. Wonderful.
What?
Trustees come to the center, maybe.
Yeah. I'll show that to my CEO.
We're getting a picture.
Yes.
I'm going to do that right this moment now. All right. We have reached the end of our agenda. Thankfully. And it was a lovely ending. Thank you. Thank you for that recognition. So looking for a motion to adjourn. Trustee Goldstein, thank you, a second or I can't, well, I could probably say, would like to okay, trustee Hamaguchi, thank you, all in favor. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those who've been here tonight. Take good care.
Think I've ever been through such an emotional ending of